Mr. Mayor Protam, recording has begun. Mayor James is present online.
Okay, thank you Director Phipps, and you are acting as the clerk this evening. We seem to have a bit of an echo. Is there a way to remedy that as we get started?
Is that better? Still echo?
Hey Director Phipps, we ready to go?
If you are okay with this echo.
Okay, maybe we can work on that while we're moving. Thank you very much. I thank you all for joining us this evening. Could we get a roll call?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor Protam. Mayor James?
Here.
Councilman Winkler?
Present.
Councilman Trolinger?
Present.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Present.
Councilman Jenkins?
Present.
Mr. Mayor Protam, you have a quorum.
Thank you. If you will all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance to start our meeting. Thank you, and thank you all for being here this evening. At this time, I will ask our fellow council members, have you had the opportunity to review this evening's agenda? And if so, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Mr. Mayor Protam?
Yes.
I moved it, we accept the May 14th, 2024, 6:00 PM meeting agenda as presented.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
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 This time, before officially calling the first public hearing to order, I would like to ask the town clerk to review the procedures for tonight's hearing. Madam Clerk, would you please review the procedures for this evening's public hearing for us?
Town of LaPlata public hearings are conducted in the following manner. Call to order, review of public notices.
I apologize, we can hear you from the hallway. I don't know how we are doing hearing you in this room. There's a way to divert speakers into
Fantastic.
sound in this room or not.
Can you hear me now, sir?
We all stay very quiet. We can, we can hear you. That's certainly better.
Oh, that was better. Can you hear me, sir?
Yes, yeah, go for it.
Okay. Town of LaPlata public hearings are conducted in the following manner. Call to order, review of public notices, summary of town staff report and recommendation, questions by the town council to town staff, written documents entered into the record, speakers from the public, additional questions by the town council, closing of public hearing. Written documents for the record submitted in advance of the public hearing are provided to the presiding officer prior to the opening of the public hearing. At the appropriate time, the presiding officer will call registered speakers to the podium. Speakers who have registered to speak in advance via the town webpage will be recognized prior to speakers who register upon arrival at the public hearing. At the discretion of the presiding officer, speaker's comments may be limited to three minutes and may not be yielded to another person. A sign-in sheet was provided at the entry of council chambers for any public hearing attendees to register to speak if they have not already done so in advance via the town webpage. Registration to speak has now ended.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. As we get started, Mr. Manuel, if I could get some clarification for the benefit and the edification of those here present physically and virtually as to where we are in the process, what we are accomplishing this evening as FY 2025.
Yes, Councilman Trolinger, this evening, we are conducting the public hearing as part right now. From that, this will go to a first reading, which can take place tonight, and then a second reading next week, where at such time, the council would be able to consider adoption of the tax increase. So this is the preliminary step.
Okay.
Or the first step, I shouldn't say preliminary.
Thank you. And for those familiar with these hearings, so you're aware, you know, we give you some time to speak, and I'll read the script here in a moment. It's not a dialogue, unfortunately, between council and those that are speaking. We certainly are paying attention and taking notes and considering everyone's opinion here, but I don't want you to feel like you're talking to a brick wall because we are not here to answer questions. We're here to seek your input and the public, their perspectives on what's going on, okay? So thank you all for joining us. I would like to officially open this public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2025 real property tax rate at 6:06 PM. Madam Clerk, has the notice of public hearing been properly advertised?
My apologies, sir. Yes, Mr. Mayor Protam, for the record, this public hearing was advertised in the Southern Maryland News issue published, issue on May 3rd, 2024. A copy of the advertisement is attached to the meeting agenda. Notice of this public hearing was also advertised on the town webpage.
Thank you. The town treasurer provide recommendations regarding the proposed fiscal year 2025 real property tax rate.
Councilmember Trolinger, there was a staff report included, or a memorandum, I should say, included within the agenda pack, which reads the purpose. The proposed FY 25 budget will require a tax increase of .03 cents per $100 assessed value to support the increase in operating expenditures for the additional personnel costs. It is best practice for operating expenditures to be covered by operating revenues, which are taxes, rather than applying fund balance. This maintains concurrent, recurring revenues to be available for recurring costs and fund balance to be reserved for capital assets and improvements.
Okay, thank you. Just town manager, if I can ask the treasurer to come up in the event that town council has any questions, as I understand it, there probably are a few. So I'm going to open up for town council of questions based on Ms. Larson's report. All right. I stand corrected. Thank you for coming up to the table. Okay, Madam Clerk, we received any additional written statements to be included into the record?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protam, six letters were received before the published deadline and are included in the public record. Additional letters received after the published deadline were forwarded to the town council for consideration, but have not been included in the public record.
Thank you. We'll now proceed to public comment. I have the list of those who, I do not have the list of those who have signed to speak up tonight, but I will be receiving them shortly. Thank you. Speakers, when you are called upon to speak, please state your name and whether you live within the incorporated town limits. We are asking you to limit your comments to three minutes. We have a lot of people to hear from tonight, is my understanding. So please keep that time limit respectful. We've got a clock on there. First here is Mr. Gilroy. If you could come up, please, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Lynn Gilroy, and I reside at 1008 Martin Drive in Town of LaPlata, and I have served in the same seat that you are sitting in today as part of the council of this town. We've had to make some hard decisions when we served, and you have to do likewise, especially when it comes time for the budget and using the funds of the residents entrusted to our care to operate this town. I have reviewed the document that the treasurer has provided to you in April of 2024. I believe that the most important priority you have is your employees. Without them, you cannot operate, and in these competitive times, you're constantly in competition with other jurisdictions. We cannot continue to tax the citizens to satisfy our champagne taste on a beer budget. The operating expenses is one aspect that can be slowed down until the revenues catch up. With the additional taxpayers, that will include Pine Grove and also the other added inclusions of construction that is occurring off of Rosewick Road. Taxpayers ask one question of elected officials. What am I getting for my tax dollars? If you cannot answer that question, then you need to reevaluate your priorities. One final concern is that the current, currently, there is a tax differential that is applied by the county for like services that the town provides, including law enforcement. This increase in the tax rate that is before you may jeopardize that credit, and the tax rate will increase for both the county tax and the town tax. This is a double hit on our taxes in the end, which is unacceptable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gilroy. Lori Jackie? I apologize if I mispronounced your last names.
Good evening. It's my understanding Thank you. Sixteen years ago, my husband was diagnosed with a rare form of dementia, progressive dementia, the same as Bruce Willis. I retired 14 years ago to take care of him. The last 10 have been really hard, and the last three have been grueling. Due to my husband's Ed's illness, we have incurred substantial medical expenses. Medicare and supplement was, has assisted, but did not cover all expenses. My husband passed away last November, and not only am I grieving, but I'm recovering and taking note of my expenses till I have enough for the rest of my life. I know that my problems aren't your problems. However, I'm trying to figure out where this extra money to live in the town is coming from. You see, this increase will have a real effect on me as a senior living on a fixed income. My retirement employer isn't coming to me advising me I've done a great job, so here's a raise, nor is there a bonus. So where is this money going to come from? Please tell me. I worked 46 years and retired to take care of my old husband, and now I'm on social security. I don't know if I can keep up with living in Maryland, much less in the town of LaPlata, which I consider my home and a great place to live. I'm informing you of my circumstances. Now, can you advise me what our property taxes need to be increased more than they already have already because of a booming real estate market and the building explosion that is going on? Thank you.
Ma'am? Is our, just for the benefit, we weren't anywhere close to three minutes on our first two speakers, but just for the benefit of the rest of the speakers, if we could, oh, there it is. I have David Clements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am a resident within the incorporated town of LaPlata. As a resident, I have a vested interest in the growth of this town, its infrastructure, and the overall health and well-being of the men and women that put their lives on the line to keep the day-to-day operations and working order. As we've all seen, the town of LaPlata is experiencing exponential growth, new businesses, shopping centers, apartment complexes, neighborhoods, et cetera, all while maintaining the relatively same number of police officers and public work technicians to bear the increasing workload. This is an indisputable fact that a third-party vendor, PayPoint HR, presented to the town council as a result of a contracted study, which is available on the town of LaPlata's website. When PayPoint HR presented their study in February of 2022, they stated that based on the projected growth in the town of LaPlata, the LaPlata Police Department would need a forecasted increase of 20.54 persons by 2024. That increase should have made the LaPlata Police Department a 46.04-person department as of this year. However, as of today's date, the LaPlata Police Department is a 31-person department, 27 sworn, one of which is still in training, and four civilian. These numbers prove that there is a disparity in recruitment and retention within the LaPlata Police Department despite recent misinformation shared in private groups and social media. This proposed increase to real property taxes is not an exclusive benefit to the men and women of the LaPlata Police Department. It is a benefit to all residents and consumers that frequent the town of LaPlata, so that we, as a community, can retain and recruit quality employees that keep our water and sewers and work in order, quickly respond to our residents or business in our times of need, accrue to repair collapsing roads, and that hand to hold when you receive the worst news of your life. Our dedicated staff provide an exceptional service to the town of LaPlata's residents and businesses. I enjoy the quality of life that I have as a resident in the town of LaPlata, and I know many of my friends and family feel the same. This proposed increase to real property taxes is necessary for us to enjoy the services that make the town of LaPlata home.
Mr. Royce?
Good evening. I'm David Royce. I am not a resident of LaPlata, but I do have a vested interest as I am an employee, and I do frequently shop here and patronize the town itself. I'm here tonight as a voice for the members of the LaPlata Police Department. Over the past weeks, we've all noticed misinformation being spread throughout the community and on social media. The main theme seems to be that this proposed tax increase is solely because of the requested modification to the retirement benefit that would include members of the police department and members of Public Works. This is something that the department has been requesting for over seven years and is just now making it to the table. To blame the tax increase solely on the pension is disingenuous. Simply put, this tax increase is necessary to upgrade the basic infrastructure and for the operating costs for the town to continue growing in the manner that it is already growing. Yep.
We're gonna, we're gonna pause. All right, so we're gonna count that as 20 seconds.
Audrey.
All right. Go ahead and pick up the last couple sentences. Apologize for that technical difficulty there. Thank you.
Lesson, simply put, this tax increase is necessary to upgrade the basic infrastructure and for operating costs for the town to continue growing in the manner that it's already growing. What the general public is not aware of is that prior to the initial balanced budget presented on April 16th, which did not include the pension benefits, all departments were asked to slim their proposed fiscal year 2025 operating costs due to an extreme budget deficit. The police department alone cut necessary items and personnel out of our budget to reduce this deficit by 66%, leaving the other six departments to split the remaining 34%. What I mean by this is that the balanced budget presented to the council and to the citizens was balanced on the backs of the police department. As council members have stated in previous meetings, the modification of the pension benefits is crucial to the successful retention and recruitment of officers for our department. For those that don't know, the current pension system that most of our officers fall under is a rule of 90. It's a formula where your years of service and age must combine and equal 90 before an employee is eligible to collect full retirement benefits. Under the current plan, a new officer, starting with us at 21 years old, would be required to work 34 and a half years just to collect 51% of their salary. For this profession, the industry standard is recognized at 50% at 25 years. Even though that's the standard, there are very many departments in our area that offer far better and very few departments that offer worse. As a recruiter for the department, I can speak firsthand that our current retirement system is one of the biggest things that turns potential applicants away. Agencies with better retirement benefits will attract our officers, who are already here working the streets, certified and experienced, who are looking for a better benefits package to be able to retire when they should. If nothing is done, this will create a personnel crisis here worse than what we're already experiencing. For a town that prides itself in not raising taxes in over 20 years, we are no longer able to grow internally without it, and the growth around us will not stop and wait for us to catch up. I leave the citizens with this last thought. In a town that's projected to gain 10,000 new residents over the next few years, is public safety really the line item that you want your town to sacrifice in the name of a balanced budget? Thank you.
And Mr. Posey?
Hey, good evening. My name is Jason Posey. I live at 806 Severn Drive in the Rundle Hills neighborhood. I am in support of the proposed real property tax increase within the town properties, and here is why. One, it affects my family and friends in multiple ways. If the town wants to keep up with inevitable growth that is already here with the new and growing neighborhoods like Pine Grove and Steeplechase, they'll need adequate infrastructure like sewer, water, and roads to run such growth. The increase to a residence taxes works out to be $10 a month for a $400,000 house. It does not break the bank for the property tax. It's comparable to the cost of a McDonald's meal. Two, if the town wants to recruit and retain quality employees for the police department and public works department, the enhanced pension plan will pay for itself in the long run with loyalty, quality of life, and retention. According to the Maryland Municipal League, an average age of a citizen at the time of their death is 79 years old, while a police officer is only 59. On average, an officer receives retirement benefits for only 20 months. The enhanced pension plan helps to take care of our officers who have provided public safety, security, and stability for the town while working rotating shifts while everyone is asleep in our beds or enjoying a holiday with family. Our public works employees work long hours on town special events, inclement weather, standbys, and water main breaks in the middle of the night. As many citizens may not know, this town owns its properties outright with no liens or bonds, which is unusual in the municipal government world. Yes, taxes have not been increased in over 20 years. Sometimes you need to spend money to get things done properly, such is a fact of life. My family has lived, worked, owned businesses, played, and supported this town since its founding in 1888. I do not want to see this town, my town, our town, fall behind the so-called power curve. This town always had a family atmosphere. What do you do when your family asks for something? You provide it. Please don't disappoint a vote yes. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Johnston? John Sun, next. John Stun first, sorry about that.
Hi, I'm Thomas Johnston. I live at 210 Dorchester Court, LaPlata, Maryland, and live in here since 1998. And to my knowledge, we have not raised any taxes in over 20 years. As a police officer, almost a 20-year veteran here, not planning on going anyplace anytime soon, I would like to remain here. However, with that being said, me being a corporal with this town and a corporal with the Charles County Sheriff's Office, they're making over $70,000 more than I am and have better retirement. I could simply leave here today, go there, still collect my pension from here from what I have vested, go to the county, and still make more money than I'm making now in three years. You get in what you put out. If you don't pay us, you're not going to be here. Same thing with the public works department. I agree 100% with them as well. If you have to raise taxes to make it better for the employees for the town of LaPlata, then let's do it. All I've got to say.
Mr. John Sun?
Good evening, Town Council Mayor. I am a resident in the town of LaPlata. My name is Tajon Johnson. I want to come to support, express my support for the property tax increase. I believe that this increase is necessary for this, to meet the growing demands for services from the town residents. It is important to communicate the reason for the tax increase as being driven by the increased demand for service rather than solely focusing on the retirement benefits for police and public work personnel. While the latter is a valid concern in terms of attracting and retaining experienced personnel, it is essential to emphasize that the primary goal of the tax increase is to address the needs of the community. Those are my comments, and thank you for considering them.
Sorry. It's like the pen was running out on you there.
Excuse my attire, I came from a job site to here, so I apologize. Thank you for allowing me to speak. First of all, I own an investment property in the town of LaPlata. We, my company, I own Homeowner Solutions, and we bought a fair amount of properties over the years in the town of LaPlata. I grew up here, I wasn't raised here, I lived in White Plains, but I went to LaPlata High School, and I believe everybody in this town should be rewarded for everything that they do. This is a beautiful town. The problem that I'm having is that my investors want to pull out because of the expense, and it's hard, very hard, to bring investors to a town when they see extreme costs. Now, that does not mean that the police department does not deserve a raise, it doesn't mean that Public Works doesn't deserve a raise, or anyone else in the county, I mean the town, excuse me. But at some point, you're going to end up chasing investors with, do have money here, away, and they're going to purchase properties elsewhere. You just have to decide how to make it all work for everyone. So, thank you very much. It was short and sweet, but I do believe that everyone here deserves a good competitive wage, everybody from the person who takes out the trash, the public works, to the sheriff's department, and I believe we want to work with everybody, but at the same time, it's so hard to bring money into this town. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Neen Harrington?
Thank you, Council. For the record, I am a town employee, I am not a resident of the town, so I do not have a personal interest with the tax increases on the citizens. I can't speak to that since I am not involved. But I can say from a fiscal perspective and from looking through the specifics of the pension plan and different things, the tax rate, that any reasonable citizen would find it unfair for this tax increase under the circumstances. I know it's been said that this tax increase is not related to specifically the new pension plan, however, a balanced budget was presented, and that did not require a tax increase. Regardless of the intention, the town is creating the perception that the tax increase is funding a pension plan, and that could cause some issues with the citizens. Speaking on the pension plan that's been applied to this, I don't feel that this pension plan is the plan that should be implemented. I think that, you know, obviously, we've worked very hard on this, you guys have worked a long time on this, the police department, public works, public safety in general, yes, they need to be recognized, they need to have options, but this pension plan is not a good plan. I provided a letter to the council, which was not included in the record, but I did go through some data and some insight to kind of show why this plan really shouldn't be something that we move forward with related to this tax increase. And with that, I'll keep it short. I just, I feel that the tax increase is not a good fiscal responsibility for the town right now, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Simpson? Deborah?
Good evening, Council. I am a resident of the town of LaPlata for 40 years, 1986, 170-foot duck circle, Quillwood, and I am opposed to this tax increase, and thank you for hearing everybody this evening. And thank you for hearing everybody this evening.
Got the clerk even started. Thank you, Ms. Simpson. George in Chino.
So, there are all my concerns of interest.
Thank you, sir. That is an option. Aaron Mosery.
Good evening, council. I'm Aaron Mosery, code enforcement with the town. I'm not a resident. I'm not a taxpayer, just an employee. My department, code enforcement, we do roughly five hundred inspections a year on rental properties. It's tough on people. It's tough. People are really, really struggling to make ends meet. And I know that council has thought about this and weighed those concerns, and I leave that in your very capable hands. I am compelled to speak tonight. As you know, I've submitted a letter to council. I am one of the forgotten, undervalued employees that's been completely skipped over in this pension plan. I don't mind telling you that I believe that this is a sweetheart deal for a certain segment of our town employees. We've thrown in a couple public works employees that are eligible to kind of bundle it and make it appear that everybody's winning. Behind me, there are a lot of employees that are here tonight that do not want any part of this pension plan. It's when you really get into the weeds, it's extremely unfair. It's caused nothing but problems, and I would ask council to please take a second look at it. Think about, think about all of us that work, that love this town. We love the citizens and we work hard. Think about us, the ones that are forgotten, and we're not benefiting from this at all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kirk Parks.
Good evening. My name is Kirk Parks. I'm the Assistant Director of Operations Utilities for the town of La Plata, so I'm not a resident. I appreciate this opportunity for being here tonight, and I commend the council's and mayor's actions in trying to enhance the retirement benefits for the town of La Plata staff. It's especially true for public works because we're often overlooked many times in our profession. But I'm standing here today to express my displeasure in this supplemental pension option that the town voted on. One of the cons listed in this study was that the pension offerings for the police is below norms. I would argue that the pension norms for all staff in the town is below norms. The federal government, WSSC, DC Water, they offer much better retirement benefits. Now, these organizations poach our employees all the time. It's a problem that we have to face down here in La Plata. I know we can't match those benefits, but we should at least strive to provide all of our employees the best benefits that we can. I want what's best for my staff and all employees in the town of La Plata, not just the select few. And the Bolton Study states supplemental Plan Three might actually be a benefit reduction for public works employees. Why are we taking away benefits? To give the few benefits to some. There should not be a two point two five percent for some or one point eight percent for others or nothing or negative for some employees. Despite the growth in this town, we are still a small town. And as a small-town employee, we all wear many different hats or many different jobs. My administrative aide, who's here tonight, she has a water license and a cold sampler license, not because she had a financial incentive to do it, but because she wants to help the town and the residents of this town. You've probably seen her collecting eleven copper sample from your house. Just about every person that works in public works has been involved in a sewer backup, a water main break, or they've been on the back of a trash truck. It's not just one people. It's not just five. It's the whole department. We all come together to make sure that this town's running safe and efficiently. And all these people deserve enhanced pension benefit, not just a select group. They especially don't deserve reduced benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that is the end of the list that I have. Is there anybody else that I'm missing? Can't see through your glass here, so you're going to have to answer verbally.
Excuse me. I'm not on the list, but can I speak?
I did sign in, but I couldn't call.
Okay, sir. What's your name?
Tom Balo.
I don't have your name on the list. Tom Balo will allow you to go next, ma'am. I'll I'll have Tom Balo go first, and then you can go next. All right?
Thank you. Tom Balo. My wife and I have been a resident of La Plata for sixteen years, resident of the county for thirty-five. We have three grown children, three grandchildren. While generally I am opposed to any tax increases, we already have high property taxes. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of police officers. I'm not speaking on behalf of the town employees. I have not examined the budget. I'm not intimately detailed with that, but I feel that our town officers, police officers, are grossly inadequately compensated with their retirement plan and having to work thirty years when most jurisdictions are twenty-five or many or even twenty. Security, public safety for our community is absolute paramount, and as the town grows, people come in, we need to compensate them properly in order to make them, so they won't run away to other jurisdictions. These officers put their lives on the line every time they walk out the door, put on a uniform. There are people out there who want to kill them simply because they wear a police uniform. They deserve to be compensated. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam, if you could come up, state your full name and whether.
Anne Lewis. I live in the town of La Plata.
Okay.
I just want to make it very brief. You know, they talk about the seniors made the sweat and hard work that made this town. Now they want to throw us aside. Everybody wants a raise. Well, seniors would like a raise. You might say, well, you did get a raise in social security, but they didn't tell you. They took it out in Medicare. So, actually, we didn't get a raise. The young want a raise because they didn't put the hard sweat and hard work into making this county a good county. Now, the young, you want a raise. Throw the seniors aside. Throw the old people aside. We don't count anymore. It's wrong. Taxes are way too high now. People cannot even afford their medication. They're living on, from, on a fixed income with social security, which they did not get a raise because if you know anything about it, they took it out in Medicare. They didn't tell you that part. That's all I need to say, and I am against that's taxes.
Thank you. Okay, I have one last person for public comment. Come up. Can you come up to the microphone? Yes, sir. I understand. There's, there's some grace allowed for that. So, if you could state your name.
Yeah, my name is Bernard Winkler. I live at two oh six Oak Avenue. I also have a place of business at two thirteen Kent Avenue. I'm here to speak against the tax increase. I have with me my quarterly water bill, sewer bill, and all of that, which is fifteen hundred dollars a quarter. That's six thousand dollars a year, most of which is that, I think y'all call it stormwater. I call it rain tax. Anyhow, so in addition to the six thousand, I also have to pay property taxes. And since I'm a business, I also get to pay a personal property tax. And since my business rents equipment, that personal property tax is pretty, pretty strong. I, the question I have is, with the state police barracks being two miles up the road, the county sheriff is located right here in the town of La Plata. I questioned whether or not we need as many police officers. I'm all for them getting raises. I'm all for the public works. I know a lot of these people, both in the police and public works, and I'm all for it. I have to make a payroll every Friday, so I know what, what it's all about. But it seems to me that, you know, I guess the word on the street was when this policeman, the chief of police, right? Okay. And I'm not sure how long you've been here.
Ten and a half years.
Ten and a half years. All right. The word on the street was when he appeared that he was going to have a police force of X number of people. And I know a lot of us businessmen, what? This town of La Plata with that many police? And I think we all agreed, well, as long as there's no tax increase, okay, but, you know, it's fine. But now that you want a tax increase, I really question whether or not we, I don't want to defund the police. I'm just wondering if we need as many police. So, I would, I'm against the tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. At this time.
Mr. Protem, if I may. Two individuals are signed up on the general public comment section, sign-in sheet, who may have intended to sign up for public hearing here.
Okay.
The first name is Michael Fritz.
Okay, so just to clarify, tonight, we've got two opportunities to speak. Right now, we're talking about fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Just want to confirm you did want to speak on that issue. All right, come on up, Mr. Fritz. Thank you.
My name is Michael Fritz. I am a resident of La Plata. I risk being that person that confirms that everything's been said, just not everybody said it. But I'm not against making our police department equal in pay to those in the surrounding area. I'm in favor of that. It's paying for it with tax increases, and I'm against. Property taxes are going up anyway as our assessed valuations go up. There's no need to do that. We need to cut expenses on the budget rather than increase taxes for everybody. And I'm sympathetic to the large fraction of town employees that are not involved in these enhanced retirement plans that I've heard up to three eighths of the total number of employees is not involved, and I, I wonder how they feel. I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fritz. Ms. Phipps, who is the second person?
Mr. Protem, the second individual is Bob Kiesel.
Mr. Kiesel.
Bob Kiesel, and I apologize my attire also. I wasn't expecting to speak this evening. But I am a resident of the town. I am also the state trustee for FOP Lodge Twenty-four, which represents Charles County Sheriff's Office. And I am the state chairman of trustees, and I serve on the Maryland State FOP Executive Board. And I am here to obviously give my support to the men and women of the town of La Plata Police Department. And I can assure you that the town of La Plata, with the growth that is planned between Pine Grove, Magnolia Gardens, the apartments up by Aldi, Steeplechase, that within the next ten years, you are going to want a professional and dedicated police department. And I will tell you that, be serving on the Maryland State Board, I see the retention and recruitment issues that happen all over the state. I'm also the employee representative for the Sheriff's Office Retirement Plan. We have three bodies of employees just in the Sheriff's Office Retirement Plan, and then all of our civilian employees are represented in the county plan. So, benefit differentiation within an organization is not uncommon. It's going to happen. But I will also tell you, the Charles County Sheriff's Office, it's three percent a year for the first twenty, and you get seventy percent after twenty-five years. The state law enforcement officer's pension system is twenty-five at fifty percent. There are officers all over this state, once they become Maryland certified, because to become Maryland certified officer, you have to go to a police academy for six months. Then you have to go through at least two hundred and forty hours of field training just to get your card from the Maryland Police Training Commission. Once you have that card and you have the ability to go to any police department in the state of Maryland, and you don't have to be retrained. That is a huge investment for our departments. And when you have departments that have ten, fifteen percent vacancy rates, if you don't take care of your police officers, you're going to lose your police officers. I'm just here to tell you. We've already gotten some that have come over to us. Our correctional officers get two point two five percent a year. So, I understand there's a tax increase. I will take that burden. I am a town resident. I live in Hickory Ridge. So, you need to understand with the growth that's going to occur here, you need to take care of those guys and the public works folks. I will say this, as a resident, they have come and helped me out on more than one occasion, and I love those guys. And I will say, I understand other employees being upset about it, but rising tides, rise, raise all ships. You have to start at the bottom, and we're talking about three cents on every hundred dollars. It's three hundred dollars on a million-dollar property. I know people are struggling. I get it. Four hundred thousand dollar house. I mean, we're talking about a hundred and some dollars tax increase. So, I would just implore you, please support these folks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Phipps, is that?
I have no further individuals signed up, sir.
Thank you very much. At this time, ask, are there any other questions based on public comments or otherwise? The town council and a mayor who's, I, you know, has for our treasurer. Seeing none. Madam Treasurer, do you have anything further to add before we conclude this public hearing? Okay. Thank you. This concludes the public hearing on the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-five real property tax rate. The town council will hear no further comments or questions regarding this issue at this time. I'm going to ask now for consensus from the town council to proceed with legislation on proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-five real property tax rate. As a reminder, this is in line with Mr. Manuel's explanation. This is here for first reading this evening and for progression in that process. Councilman Winkler.
I vote no.
Thank you. To woman, Brian Ward.
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, if you can hear me.
I can hear you. The record should be held open for another seven days, in my opinion, to make a decision to bring this to legislation tonight based on eighteen people speaking, six written, and four that weren't on there. Is, it makes it look like you're rubber stamping this and just went through the process and not listening to what the towns' residents have to say. So, I, I would, if I was presiding over there, recommend not going to legislation and keep the record open as we have in the past for many of our public hearings. So, to go to legislation today is an absolute one hundred percent no. I think it's disingenuous, and I think it makes it look like we're rubber stamping something. Thank you.
Okay, so are you, you're making a motion? I hear your vote is no. Are you making a motion this time, Madam Mayor?
I can't make a motion because you have a motion right on the table, but it should have been brought to council for a, to see if we kept the record open before us going to legislation.
Well, I appreciate your comments, Madam Mayor. As stated by Director Phipps, these notices were made. We have had extensive input of people here, of people who are not here. I am in favor of moving towards legislation, so we do have a consensus to move this forward.
And one other comment. You are actually competing against an election today as well, the primary. And so, the primary, as I have had several people say, they were unable to come in today because they are working the polls. So, again, my, my record, my, I just think that not holding the record open is not, it just shows that minds were already made up, and I don't think that's the way we govern.
Okay, I appreciate that. I appreciate that, Madam Mayor. Councilman, or excuse me, Mr. Manuel, have we received written statements from the public who were not able to attend this evening?
That may be a better question for the Director of Legislative Services.
We have received written statements for those that were not able to attend tonight's meeting.
I'm sorry, sir. Was that a question for me?
Yes, that is.
We received six before the deadline, the published deadline. We also received two more, three more afterwards.
Okay, you have forwarded those to council, so thank you for that. Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this time, we are going to move on to public comment, believe it or not, as part of the agenda. This is not with relationship to FY twenty twenty-five. Do we have any public comments?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor Protem. I think we. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor Protem. I think we should be going to approval of minutes.
Oh, I apologize. Okay, this time, I'm gonna ask council members, they've had the opportunity to review the minutes included with tonight's agenda. And if I have a motion to accept those minutes as presented, or any discussion, I'll do it.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
I move that we accept the meeting minutes from work session April 16th, 2024. Approve meeting minutes from special meeting closed session and regular meeting on April 23rd. Approval of meeting minutes from special meeting closed session on April 24th as presented.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Do, is there any discussion? Hearing none, do I have a, a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes from work session April 16th, 2024, special meeting closed session and regular meeting on April 23rd, 2024, and the approval of minutes from special meeting and closed session on April 24th, 2024, please state so by saying aye.
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 Okay, all those opposed, hearing none, we are going to move to public comment this time. Unless I hear otherwise, I believe all of the public comment was addressed in FY 2025 session. Um, that brings us to a few proclamations this evening. Uh, Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, Military Appreciation Month, May 2024. Whereas for generations, the freedom and security enjoyed by the citizens of the United States are direct results of the continued vil- vigilance and service of the, of the United States Armed Forces over the history of our great nation, and whereas the sacrifices of those who serve, those currently serving, and the family members who support them have, have preserved their liberties that have enriched our great nation, making it unique in the world community. And whereas in 2004, the United States Congress passed a resolution proclaiming May as National Military Appreciation Month, encouraging all citizens to honor current and former members of the U.S. Armed Forces and their families, including those who have made the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas the month of May was selected for this display of patriotism, because during this month, we observed Victory in Europe Day, VE Day, Military Spouse Day, Loyalty Day, Armed Forces Day, National Day of Prayer, and Memorial Day. And whereas during Military Appreciation Month, we are reminded of the important role of the United States Armed Forces have played in the history and the, and the development of our country and state, and our responsibility as Americans to support and honor the selfless service of our military families. And whereas the town of La Plata recognizes the tireless support and direct charitable and financial aid provided to veterans and their families in our local community organizations such as the American Legion, Harry White, Wilmer Post 82. Now, therefore, we, the Council of the Town of La Plata, proclaim May 2024 Military Appreciate- Appreciation Month in the Town of La Plata in recognition of the commitment and dedication to the defense of our nation by our active duty and retired service members and their families, and with deep gratitude to the men and women who have given their lives in defense of our freedoms. This is signed by the Council of the Town of La Plata, Janine E. James Mayer, David L. Winkler, Councilman, Matthew D. D. Trolinger, Councilman, Evelyn L. Bryant Ward, Councilwoman, and myself, David M. Jenkins, Councilman. And I would just add, uh, for all the vets in the room, thank you.
We also have a proclamation for National Public Works Week. Councilman?
Okay, uh, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the Town of La Plata. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professions who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government in the private sector, who are responsible for building, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures, and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas public works professions stand ready to respond at a moment's notice, recover the scene of disasters, emergencies, and life-threatening situations, and restore critical infrastructure and services. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the Town of La Plata to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. Now, therefore, we, the Council of the Town of La Plata, do recognize the week of May 19th through the 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Weeks, Public Works Week, and urge all citizens to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life by advancing quality of life for all. Council of the Town of La Plata, Janine E. James Mayer, myself, Councilman, Matt Trolinger, Councilman, Evelyn Bryant Ward, Councilwoman, and David Jenkins, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman. Lastly, click it or ticket, Councilwoman Brian Ward.
Um, whereas May 20th through June 2nd, 2024 is click it or ticket. Um, whereas the safety and security of the citizens of the Town of La Plata and surrounding areas are vitally important. And whereas a large percentage of our citizens regularly drive or ride in motor vehicles on road, on our roadways. And whereas one in five motorists, or 19% nationally, still fail to regularly wear their seat belts while driving and/or riding in a motor vehicle. And whereas regular seatbelt use is the single most effective way to protect people and to reduce fatalities and motor vehicle crashes, and is supported by the laws of the state of Maryland. And whereas May 20th through June 2nd, 2024, has been named the National Click It or Ticket Law Enforcement Mobilization Period. And whereas across the country, law enforcement officers will actively be participating in the mobilization to ensure all motor vehicle occupants are buckled up by day, up day and night, and to reduce the risk of injury and death caused in traffic crashes. And whereas increased enforcement of seatbelts, seatbelt laws coupled with public publicity has proven to be an effective method to increase seatbelt use rates and decrease fatal crashes. Now, therefore, we, the town, the town, recognize the period of May 20th through June 2nd, 2024, as click it or ticket, and urge all citizens to always wear seatbelts while driving, when driving or riding on our roadways. Signed by the Council of the Town of La Plata, Janine E. James Mayer, David L. Winkler, Councilman, David D., Matthew D. Trolinger, Councilman, Evelyn L. Bryant Ward, Councilwoman, David M. Jenkins, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilwoman. At this time, we're gonna move on to matters of council discussion. Uh, Mr. Manuel. We are gonna be hearing from Mr. Jamie Kendrick from Meaden Hunt. Is that correct?
Yes, uh, Jamie is now flying the banner of, I think it's Wood Valley Consulting. I'm see if Jamie is online. Uh, but he is still associated somewhat with, uh, Meaden Hunt. So as soon as Mr. Kendrick. Let me see if Kelly has provided him access. I see a JK. In this program, Safe Streets and Roads for All, something Jamie and I were really, I won't say we were brainstorming, because that's a little cliche, but we were talking about various projects in town, and, uh, we were finishing up our session. Jamie was heading to another meeting in DC, and he sent me a, uh, an email. And based on that email, Jamie, do you want to take it from there?
Sure, that can be heard at this point.
If, if I could ask, uh, Ms. Phipps to turn up the volume to the extent possible, um, just because. Sorry, Mr. Kendrick, you're a little bit hard to hear.
We haven't had a good evening yet.
That's.
I will do my best. Good evening, um, Councilwoman Bryant's, uh, uh, proclamation on Click It or Ticket, uh, week is certainly timely, uh, to this discussion. Um, so yeah, to follow Mr. Manuel's point, um, USDOT, uh, has a program that was created by the bipartisan infrastructure law called the, uh, Safe, USDOT Safe Streets for All Program. This is a competitive grant program that frankly has not been all that competitive, uh, the past several years. Uh, this is one of the few programs that has been undersubscribed, uh, and they have money that carries over from year to year to year uh, for certain activities. And so, as Mr. Manuel indicated, there are several projects, uh, that have been uh, under discussion, uh, whether it is continuing to figure out the details on the, uh, Southwest Access Management Plan, uh, and whether we can do something about Glenn Albit, uh, a connection across Glenn Albin, or how we deal with, um, a little farther down at Stagecoach and moving those plans forward. Excuse me, or whether it is to advance some of the sidewalk feasibility studies, or to finally get Mr. Trolinger's, uh, uh, flashing beacon figured out there along Maryland 6. Um, thi- this will probably be the venue to do that. Uh, if I thought of something in Mr. Winkler's district, I would come up with that, but I, I'm not there yet. Um, and of course, Mr. Jenkins, Mr. Jenkins covers the waterfront in terms of, uh, uh, traffic safety. So I, I didn't even feel the need to mention him. Uh, so, so, um, what we are bringing forward tonight is a, uh, request for uh, council approval to seek a USDOT Safe Streets for All program that requires one or two things on your part. Um, we are seeking, uh, $360,000 in, uh, federal funds, which at some point will, will require a 20% match, which will occur over two or three fiscal years. So call it $30,000 a year for three years. Uh, and that money, again, would go to continuing work on the 301 Access Management stuff to cover the developments there and Stagecoach, and try and get one of those projects in design. Uh, it would include money to, uh, carry forward to some of the sidewalk feasibility studies, uh, that, that you all have been seeking. And then third, uh, to advance some, uh, kind of neighborhood traffic calming, uh, programs, uh, that are kind of quick build in nature. Uh, excuse me. So in order to apply for this, you have to, uh, endorse the Charles County Low Local Roadway Safety Plan, uh, which Mr. Jenkins and, uh, Planning Director, uh, served on the, the Advisory Council for. Excuse me, and that plan endorses a goal of zero fatalities aspirationally, of course, by 2040, and calls for a number of strategies, uh, you know, broad strategies, uh, to, to get there. So, and, and of course, the types of strategies that are in that plan are the types of strategies that are in this grant application. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. I think we included, uh, the application draft. Still needs a couple of tweaks. And, uh, I think there's a, a resolution coming up later in the evening, if I recall correctly.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Any questions by council? I have a lot.
I tell, what was, what was the match? Was it 20 or 30%?
20.
20%?
Yep.
Okay. That's the only question I had, just for clear.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Jenkins? Councilman? Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Uh, you must have read my mind. Um, uh, I have read about this grant, and, and, and I'm particularly interested i- i- about the neighborhood, uh, a neighborhood or quick, quick fix project that we could hopefully deploy in the neighborhoods, because, um, I'm speaking from personal experiences, uh, as a former runner, now cyclist and a walker, uh, and I know the police department probably thinks I'm, uh, hear this every other day, but, uh, there is increased speeding and within neighborhoods. And in fact, I'm gonna, I, I was almost hit two weeks ago in my neighborhood in broad daylight at 7:30 in the morning, when a car decided, uh, even though they saw me walking my dog, decided I'm gonna run through the stop sign and I see you, but I'm gonna swerve around you without stopping. Uh, and as, a- and where I live, and clocks run as 25 miles an hour. So I just would hardly endorse this grant. And when do we have to apply for it?
Uh, there is a round of applications that is due this Thursday. Okay. And then there's, there's another round that is due on August the 29th. We, it is a first come, first served program, so we're teed up to, to come in this Thursday, uh, with your approval tonight.
And then when would be?
Not, not to put the pressure on you, but yes.
That's okay. Uh, so d- does there any estimate of once it's submitted, when we could hear uh, a- any approval or award of funds, or when would be notified?
We would anticipate, um, as you might imagine, the administration is keen to get lots of things announced, uh, by early October of this year, uh, for a date certain occurring in November. Uh, so we would expect to hear by the end of September, early October on this, and then typically it takes another four to six months to get under agreement with, uh, the Federal Highway Administration. So I would think next spring is when we'd be able to get started in earnest.
And then the grant is what? It's a one-year grant, or is it spread out over a couple of years?
You can, you can spend it over three years.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
And Mr. Kendrick, you said that 20% buy-in was over that three-year period as well.
Correct.
Um, my only question is, I know it's a, it's a low-ticket item, but we have the funds to be able to cover 30,000 over three years.
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Um, any further questions by council? Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir.
Seeing none, okay. So the request is to get this over to legislation so we can get these applications done to allow Mr. Kendrick to lobby on our behalf for these funds by Thursday, correct?
That is correct. There's a resolution under legislation for your consideration.
Okay, so I'm looking for consensus to move this to legislation. Councilman Winkler?
Yes.
Okay, Councilwoman Brian Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
Uh, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
And I'm a guest. Thank you very much for identifying this great opportunity for the town, and, uh, we look forward to seeing the results.
Great. If I could put in a plug to the clerk, uh, that presuming that you passed the legislation this evening, if the clerk would be so kind as to gather your signatures, scan that back in and send it to me tonight, I would be most thrilled.
Uh, okay, well, I think your message is really to us, because we get no promise with clerk trying to get our signature. So I appreciate you making that statement to us. Um, so we'll try to see what we can do to get that done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all so much.
All right, at this time, um, welcome Ms. Larson back up. Ms. Larson, the floor is yours.
So up for discussion tonight is the, um, FY 2025 fee schedule. Um, most of the administrative planning and permit fees increased around 4%. Some, um, increased slightly more because of contractor costs. The farmer's market is increasing 15% to cover the expecting operating cost for the 2024 season. Um, there is no increase in inspector fees, um, because that is, um, set by the contractor and the residents pay at cost. Infraction fees are already at the max allowed, so there's no changes there. Um, last council meeting, we discussed the, um, budgets of the enterprise funds, and with those budgets, there were increases um, for trash services and recycling. Trash is 25%. Recycling's increasing 14%. Sewer and water both are increasing 7%. Stormwater is, um, increasing 8%, and then major facilities fees, we are increasing 7%. Um, also last, um, council meeting, or sorry, the council meeting for that, um, we have are, we are engaging Baker Tilly to do a utility public for utility, public utility service rate study, and, um, that is anticipated to be completed in September of 2024. Um, and once we get that information, we may be coming back considering amending the fees based on that report, along with the, um, major facility fees. So if you have any questions regarding the, um, proposed fee schedule that was also included.
Now, I'm gonna ask council if there are any questions. I know the fee schedule included. Councilwoman Brian Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Um, Ms. Larson, tell me again why the, um, refuse services increased 25%? Was it because of the bins?
No, it's because the landfill costs. The county increased the land. No, it's because the landfill costs, the county increased the landfill cost to us, so we had to increase our costs.
Okay.
It's the Jenkins.
Thank you. Thanks for that clarification. So this, this for clarification, the major facility fee is fees paid by developer when they come in and they install infrastructure, water sewer and other facility and they have to pay a fee.
Yes, that's the, that's the fee that it costs the town to increase the capacity of what we're currently able to process for this development.
But then they're paying that to us.
So that the town residents aren't paying for increased capacity.
Thank you. And, and you answered my question from the Councilwoman about the, the the landfill increased cost. But, but in general, when you say enterprise fund, they are user fees. That is folks pay for what they use.
Correct.
So if they turn the water on, we're paying for it. Okay, thank you.
Questions? Any other questions from Ms. Larson?
So provided is a memo of the proposed budget that was discussed on the twenty fourth. I had provided a previous budget with comparisons to FY twenty four. This memo does the same thing. It compares the budget, how it increased compared to FY twenty four. And in addition, I also included historical revenue trends for council review. Is there any questions regarding the memo?
Hi, yes, Ms. Larson. Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protim. Ms. Larson, tell me, when we had the increase in contractor fees. Where, where are the contract, it's like forty eight percent or something, I remember.
Yeah, so I actually have a list of.
Great, thank you.
So there's, there's an election year in FY twenty five, so that's twenty nine thousand five forty. Heritage Green administration costs went up, but we also getting, that's part of the fees that they reimburse us for. So that's already in the tax revenues. Attorney fees are going up around twenty five thousand. Legislation is going up sixty seven thousand. That's for municide code, constant contact. The biggest is the twenty three thousand five fifty for civic clerk. HR is going up sixty six thousand. That is for pension administration and auditing fees, that's twenty five thousand. The pension plan doc preparation, that's twenty eight thousand and pay velocity thirteen thousand. There's ten thousand for the single audit due to opera and finance. A hundred and three thousand for planning, that's plan check, which is reimbursable costs. And spatial systems are going up forty five thousand. Thirty five thousand increase in IT for licenses and data price costs due to some of the unusual circumstances that we're having with our IT infrastructure. PD is going up fifty three percent, that's for insurance and licenses. Ninety one thousand for inspections, which are reimbursable costs. A hundred and ten thousand for HUR, which again, we get a grant for that. Eighty thousand, and that's twenty five or twenty six thousand for street sweeping. And electricity is estimated to go up fifty thousand for the streetlights. Sixty eight hundred for community events. Parks, ten thousand nine thirty mosquito spraying. We used to have that in the emergency preparedness and we're moving it to parks. But it used to be reimbursed or paid to sanitation. And then property and auto insurance are going up around fifteen thousand. We also, another thing I wanted to note is in FY twenty four, I'm anticipating that our contractors cost is going up, is going to be three hundred and thirty eight thousand more than we budgeted. And that's fourteen point three percent. And that is majority due to the inspections. There was much more inspections, again, reimbursable costs. But there's other professional services within other departments that are more than we budgeted and some of that's attorney costs. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks again for the report. I want to make sure that I'm reading this right when, at the, I guess, the last page of the general funds. Wait, when you compare FY twenty five, the current fiscal year and FY twenty five. So. It says that there's a surplus. Am I reading that right at the bottom of the column?
Which?
It's the it's on page four of four or page sixty of ninety of the package. Financial plan budget, general fund revenues and expenditures. At the very bottom, it says total expenditures and it says surplus, surplus deficit of revenues to expenditures. So that's, I'm sorry, that's projected to the end of the fiscal year?
I have projections in here, yes. So I have a budget comparison and then my ten year is a projection of where I think the expenses for FY twenty four will be. And we are going to have a surplus because of the ARPA funds covering payroll.
So, so what happens to the surplus? I mean, does it?
It's going to, so because the funds covering that surplus is ARPA funds, it's going into a assigned fund balance for those originally budgeted items that council had approved.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions from Ms. Larson? Okay. Mr. Manuel was on. We're going to move on to legislation. Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
All right. Mr. Mayor Protim and Town Council, first item on legislation is ordinance twenty four zero five, Town of La Plata Fiscal Year twenty twenty five Tax Rate. This item is for a first reading for introduction. In earnest ordinance. Stay with me, concerning the Town of La Plata Fiscal Year twenty twenty five Tax Rate for the purpose of adopting the Town of La Plata Fiscal Year twenty twenty five Tax Rate in all matters generally relating thereto. The end of council is ready. The second item, six point two, Resolution twenty four dash thirteen, Safe Streets and Roads for All. This resolution is for introduction and consideration of adoption. A resolution concerning safe streets and roads for all for the purpose of endorsing the local roadway safety plan for Charles County and the goals of zero fatalities on La Plata roadways, requesting approval by the US Department of Transportation of the application by the Town of La Plata for funding under Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Program in all matters generally relating thereto.
Okay, at this time, entertain a motion to adopt Resolution twenty four thirteen as presented by Mr. Manuel and Mr. Kendrick. Safe Streets and Roads for All.
Mayor Protim, I would make a motion to adopt Resolution, Resolution twenty four dash thirteen, Safe Streets and Roads for All as presented.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution twenty four thirteen, Safe Streets and Roads for All to allow Mr. Kendrick to attempt to secure funds for the DOT for our transportation items. Please stay, say so by saying aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Hearing none, twenty four thirteen is adopted. At this time, we're moving to business. Do I have a report from Mr. Winkler?
No reports. This week, I would say, just wanted to say a thank you to, and I, I'm sure that Councilman Jenkins and, and Mayor James will agree to, to, to the residents of Washington Square for inviting us to their dinner a couple of weeks ago. It was, it, it is worth to, for, to the rest of the council, it is worth visiting with, with them as well in the future. I would highly recommend because they are, they are a riot. So I wanted to extend my, my sincere thanks for them to, to, for inviting me.
They always put it on a good shindig.
They know. They are a lively bunch.
Thank you, they are intense. Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes, the Planning Commission met on May seventh and we approved stagecoats. Well, we extended the preliminary plat for stagecoach. Typically you do one year, but we were advised that we could do two years because it typically takes a long time to get the first year preliminary plat up and going. So we approved them for two years, their preliminary plat. And Neighborhood I, Phase Two, for Pine Grove, we approved their final plat, which means we are now, we will not be approving anything else. We are out of water. So hope to get that resolved, but we did approve that for them.
You, Congressman Bryant?
I'm sorry.
Councilman Jenkins?
That, just for clarification, that just means that we don't have any more allocations left, right? Okay, thank you. Thank you. The Parks and Recreation Commission met earlier in the month and I think I gave a prior report, but I just wanted to add a a conference, I, two conferences I attended, well, one in person in Annapolis, it was the twenty twenty four Smart Growth Conference, because it's been twenty five years since that program started in Maryland. And I believe I forwarded a conference report to the council as well as some of the staff. And then today, I attended virtually a conference about sustainability sponsored by the Eastern Shore Land Conservancy. And that was a highly interesting conference. The Secretary of Planning was there and they had a terrific presentation by the, one of the planners from the Frederick Department of Planning. And what I, and I'm, I'm a recovering planner, so this is of highly, high interest to me. But he gave a fascinating presentation on how they're doing their comp plan and their comp plan process. And I, I found that particularly interesting that maybe particularly their annual work program and maybe that could be some opportunity for us to learn from best practices. But on a larger note, perhaps it would be useful for Charles County as they go through their update to the twenty sixteen plan. Their ten-year update was required by the state. And then they had another presentation by a firm that I know about and, and have conversed with them about, they do fiscal, fiscal land use analysis. That what land uses are more effective than others. And they do it visually using GIS. So I'm going to hopefully get the recording and some of the presentations and if it's appropriate, I will pass it on to council and staff. Thank you.
Appreciate it, I'm sure others will. Thank you. Unification, we are meeting again in June. As we were scheduled, unfortunately, on Memorial Day, so we have time to get a quorum here. Madam Mayor, I expect you probably have some ports and upcoming events to give us this evening.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, well, one exciting one is this Saturday on May eighteenth at twelve thirty to four thirty. The first in the county and the first in the county will be the Asian American Pacific Islander Event. It will be held at Port Tobacco Players and I encourage everyone to attend that. Be pretty cool to have an inaugural event being held here, especially since May is Asian American Pacific Month as we recognized at our last meeting. Other than that, nothing else to report. I will be back in person on Tuesday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We, of course, hope you enjoy your time and appreciate you coming back. Safe travels for the seeing you back here. And at this time, I will entertain any motions to adjourn.
Well, I will gladly make a motion to adjourn.
I can count on you. I will second that motion. We are going to adjourn this meeting at seven twenty three PM. Thank you all.